Preparing to livestream and you will start to see up in your top left hand side of your screen that the meeting is saying it's streaming live.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, okay. Good evening and welcome to our Beckingsfield town meeting. I would like to greet my fellow councillors and those members of the public able to join us tonight on YouTube. This is a meeting of the town council electorate and is normally held in April before elections, but had to be pushed back to May unfortunately. We're joined tonight by some new councillors, who I'm delighted to see, who I know are all keen to get on with council business. This will happen, but not at this meeting. This is not a council meeting, we're not able to discuss or debate issues. It's the nature of this meeting. If I ask you to speak, then you can speak, but that will be how it will work. First of all, what I'd like to do is introduce the councillors tonight. And I'd like to start myself, Alex Dunlop, Mayor of Beckingsfield and councillor for the Central Ward. I'd like to hand over to councillor Alistair Pike.
Good evening, it's Alistair Pike, I'm Deputy Mayor and representing the South East Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Saunders.
Ah, haven't seen Sandy yet actually.
Okay, we can reintroduce him when he comes aboard. Councillor Corny.
He's having some technical difficulties as well, he was in for a moment and then.
Okay, that's fine. Councillor Anita.
Yes, I am here, I'm councillor Anita Kramer and I represent the South East Ward.
Thank you. Councillor En.
Hello, my name's Jackson Earl, I'm councillor for the Central Ward.
Councillor Owen. Is Chris here?
Yep. He is, but he looks frozen.
Okay, I'll come back to Chris in a minute. Councillor Shaw.
Good evening, I'm Lorna Shaw and I represent the West Ward.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to councillor Canwell Toole.
Good evening everyone, I'm Canwell Gill and I'm representing the Central Ward from Beckingsfield.
Thank you, Canwell. Councillor Colette Brown.
Good evening, I'm Colette Brown, I've been elected to represent the West Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Paul Mason.
Hi, I'm Paul Mason, I've been elected to represent the North Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Henry, Paul Henry.
Yeah, hi, Paul Henry, I'm councillor for Beckingsfield West Ward, which in my case is Holtsburgh.
Thank you. Councillor Callad.
Hi, good evening, I'm representing Central Ward, Beckingsfield.
Thank you, Callad. Andrea.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Essery and I am representing the West Ward.
And Deirdre.
Can I take you off mute, Deirdre?
You're muted.
Hold on, I'll see if I can unmute. Hold on one second.
There you go.
That work? Yes.
Yes. I've unmuted, it came up, yes. Hello, Deirdre Holloway, representing the West Ward.
Thank you, Deirdre. Councillor Alison Wheelhouse.
Hello everybody, I'm Alison Wheelhouse and I'm representing the North Ward.
Fantastic, thank you. Let's go back, Chris, are you with us? Still, a few glitches there.
This left.
He's left, okay, and Graham, did Graham manage to?
He's connected, but it says he's still connecting to audio.
Okay, fine. So the two councillors are councillor Graham Corny and councillor Chris Owen. And they'll be joining us, I'm sure, very shortly. Thank you very much and welcome. So, the agenda tonight, what I'm going to do now is, I put together a few photographs of my term as mayor and I had the unusual position of serving two consecutive years. And as a result of which, I've actually managed to do quite a lot of things, which I'm absolutely delighted to say. Obviously, the first year was the full-on mayoral duties, the second year due to the pandemic has been much more reserved. But where possible, I've tried to get involved with as many things as possible. As mayor, being the first citizen of Beckingsfield, that is a great honour to behold. And I'm sure, if you discuss with any mayor about their life, it's quite a wonderful thing to be a part of. So after you've seen the photographs, I may have to talk through them, it won't win me any awards. But if there was going to be a little bit of tingly music, if it doesn't work, I'll try and mention it through them sketchily. After that, I'll then say a few words about my tenure as mayor. And then we will move on to minutes and other articles. So in your hands now, Alexa, please.
Okay. I don't think I'm going to be able to get the music, sorry.
That's okay.
Let's see what happens.
Okay. So these are photographs from my period and I'll just let you look, there's nice pictures of Beckingsfield here. This is obviously the Old Town. I'll let you look at these. Slight bit of artistic licence hence why they're on the side. Obviously the memorial. The wonderful church, this is me being handed over the jewels by Anita. This was way back in 2019. You can see I've hardly aged. This was in the town hall, which I'm looking forward to getting back involved with. That's me and my mum, bless her, who managed to come and join me for that event. Obviously, the compulsory celebratory glass of fizz afterwards. This was a powerful picture that I brought on showing the support from Covid, it's a bit out of sync I'm afraid, but this was for the following year. This was the beginning of the first programme on the allotments down at Irvine's Road, you can see they're in quite a state of disrepair. This is the Camus Pond, some pictures I took when we were trying to sort out the duckweed problem that we had. And there's a story which I will tell you about at some point, I'm sure. As you can see, it's a very pretty pond, very attractive. This is Holtsburgh Park, the Friends of Holtsburgh Park put together this scheme hosted by a previous councillor, Philip Basteman. That's myself with the scouts doing a clean-up. Back in 2019, we were running around picking up litter with the team outside the town hall. Moving on to the donkey derby at St Mary's School. That was a great honour to be there, meeting community first responses. And this is all before Covid, so none of us knew really what was going to happen. But youngsters there, all the young riders and their trusty steeds, it was an absolutely hilarious event, I have to say. And they tried to get me to sit on a donkey, but I managed to avoid that. As you can see, they're all lining up ready to go. This was down at Beckett Scott, Beckett Scott Model Village hosted a lot of events. And you can see, this one here is the bikers brigade, which Anita will now remember. This is the North London Harley Davidson biker group who invited the mayor along to Beckingsfield to present some awards, quite a rough crowd. They're quite impressed the fact that I could drink two pints of beer. This is one of my favourite organisations, the cadets, as you can see, I was very much involved with them. This is the High Sheriff of Buckinghamshire, Julia Upton, in her amazing garb. There again, up at Aylesbury with the main cadet corps with the awards. Samantha Cairns in the middle there, who I presented a reward to last year for her work. So Henry Aubrey Fletcher, fantastic chap who's heads up the cadets events. Myself with the MP, Joe Morrissey. This was an event we did, these are the shops in Beckingsfield, in Newtown, Old Town and Holtsburgh, which I had to go around and judge for the best presented for Christmas, they're very attractive, they're very good. And we've got a first and second and third prize in each part of the town, which is good. That was the one in Holtsburgh. You recognise this. This is me blowing up Beckingsfield. This was the Christmas light switch on event we did, which was put together by town councillors, very successful. This is me getting my jab, I went to the Pyramid Pharmacy and met some interesting people. Sorry, flicking about a bit here, another event at a school, local school in, this was a high school, I believe. Back to my jab, so there I was with the people working there and that's me actually being stabbed. Promoting that really, just to try and encourage people to, and here's some pictures of some of the care homes I went to visit and the wonderful people and that there. And there you have it. So there's a little snapshot of my two years in office as mayor. And I don't need to share my experiences with other mayors, but those who haven't had that service, it is quite an extraordinary and a great honour to serve. And I thank the residents of Beckingsfield and my councillors for supporting me through it. So I'll move on to a few words. As your mayor, my tenure should have come to a celebratory end around this time last year. But due to Covid virus, the government quite rightly decided to cancel all the elections for that year. As a councillor, it was then decided I stay on as mayor for a further 12 months and I felt very honoured to be asked that. I've got to meet some incredible individuals and organisations in the last two years. I was delighted to be invited to many of the cadets ceremonies, as you saw in the pictures, that occurred in 2019 and was invited with other mayors across the county to cadet HQ in Aylesbury, where I met Sir Henry Aubrey Fletcher. I've met Henry quite a few times and very impressed with the commitment and energy supported to the cadets. I got to meet the then High Sheriff of Buckinghamshire, Julie Upton, the picture you saw. And of course, our present High Sheriff is Andrew Fankham, who lives just down the road at All Barn. I have to say, the dress code for such a role is quite spectacular, as you've seen. With the ceremonial honour that comes with the title of being the mayor, there is also the business of running council. And of course, that would not be impossible without supporting my then councillors and of course, town clerk. Also, the staff at town council have been working hard on projects within the town. I feel that we are now, as a council, more aligned than ever and now able to work much more efficiently. We've worked hard in attaining that standard. We were able to finally see the start of a new medical centre in 2020 to replace the Overstretch Simpson Centre and Mill Barn Medical Centre. We're building a much-needed new playground to replace the old equipment at Morehouse Square. We're working hard on the neighbourhood plan to help protect the town from future development issues and also set out our path as a town. These are but a few of the projects going on at the moment and I'm sure there'll be more in hand for the next year. Of course, this last year has been like no other, we've all suffered in some way by this pandemic. I've witnessed great work by local organisations, especially by the amazing work being coordinated by Better Connected Beckingsfield, who are carrying out amazing tasks to help those severely affected by the pandemic. We're now getting close to opening up fully again. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all those who have helped support me over these last few years and look forward to finally meeting up with you all out in the open. Not necessarily hugging, but certainly to say hello and to meet, it'd be great. I'm now going to move on to the next part of the agenda. We're going to ask for the minutes at the last annual meeting. Unfortunately, we're unable to deliver those due to a technical issue, but they will be put on the website as soon as possible, hopefully by tomorrow. From those minutes, we would have matters arising, which we're unable to do unfortunately. I'd now like to invite councillor Pike to give an update on the town plan. And then we'll move on to discussions on questions that have been submitted by electors of the town. So councillor Pike.
Thanks, Alex. Alexa, did you want to make a point then?
I was just going to make a point that there were no matters arising. I'm sorry, I couldn't find the minutes, I got carried away with the questions. There were only two members of the public at the last meeting and it was two years ago. And it was the plastic free Beckingsfield question, which we later did give them their resolution and they achieved the status that they were looking for. But it was a very sparsely attended meeting, I'm afraid. But I will get the minutes up tomorrow, but they're not very exciting.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Could you display the town plan, please? And move on to the introduction page two? Great, thank you very much. For those who may be seeing this for the first time, the town council plan is something that is reviewed every five years and was last, done I think in somewhere around about 2011. Unfortunately, we slipped a year in 2016. So the current plan runs from 2017 to the end of this year. And you'll see down in paragraph three on the introduction page that the last plan was actually centred around the vision for Beckingsfield appraisal, which was carried out during 2014 and 2015, following the guidelines laid out by the late Alan Walters and also councillor Sandy Saunders, who chaired the previous appraisal in 2009. You'll notice a little bit further on down that the plan is generally reviewed annually. And we ought now to be updating it considerably in terms of the new local government structure, which arguably you could say came in at the end of 2019. But probably with the elections that have now just taken place, it's the first, what I would call, proper reshaping of the new authority. So that's a sort of little bit of background as to how it works. And what I'd just like to do is to walk through the document fairly quickly and point out some areas where I think that we've still got a lot of work to do and some areas where I think we have made progress. On page three, on the right-hand side here, you'll see that the fundamental aims listed and referred to as, under number one, preserving and/or enhancing the character and environment of Beckingsfield. Number two, to actively work with the Beckingsfield community in the town council's policy-making. And I think there's comments that we'll make later on about two-way communication. Thirdly, to maintain the town's commercial centres by encouraging retail quality and variety and seeking to improve facilities for the town. And finally, to retain and manage the town council's assets as efficiently as possible. If we then move on to specific aims on page three. Thank you. I'm not going to mention all of them, but I do want to highlight one or two. And first of all, the item 1.3, promoting a more selective and constructive approach to town planning, linking residential, commercial and transport considerations. We said back in 2015, 2016, that we would look very closely at the idea of introducing a neighbourhood plan. And whilst it has taken a long time for us to bring that project to fruition, albeit it's really only at the very early stages at the moment, the reality is that it may well be favourable for us, given the fact that the local plan that was drafted by South Bucks, as we all know, did not come to fruition in the way that perhaps the district council had planned. And as a consequence, the timing of our neighbourhood plan may well be significantly to our advantage. That is simply because of the fact that whatever we agree now with the unitary authority, they will clearly have to support as we move forward. I think under 1.4, there's been a lot of conversation about developing and defending green belt and open green based space sites in the town. Let it be clear that whatever the background leading up to the rejection of the draft local plan, the reality is that we will maintain our position alongside other civic organisations and continue to resist any attempt to actually use that green belt land for development purposes. And I think that was a question that was posed later on when we look at questions that have come in today, and that was probably asked by Simon Wolf. So although we may reiterate it later, the reality is that we will continue to oppose any proposals to release green belt land. Moving on a little bit further, if we could perhaps move on to page six, under 1.8. I'd just like to highlight here firstly, the 2001 transportation study that was introduced by Bucks County Council. Quite clearly, in the light of the change to the unitary authority, we need to revisit that now in terms of petitioning the authority to redo the study. And also, I'd like to mention in this section, item D and item E, where we are specifically hoping now to look at proposals to reduce speed limits around certain major routes and close to schools. And we are currently applying for funding from the community board to help with our applications. I personally think that speeding in the town has got a lot worse since the restrictions were introduced back in April 2020. It seems as though lots of people with cars that can go faster are using that power within town centres. And I think we need to do something about it fairly urgently. Under 1.9, where we talked about cycling and cycling and walking as alternative modes of travel. I think we've done quite a bit to support cycling in the town within the last three to four years. But there's no doubt that there's more that we can do. And I think we also need to relook at this question of parking in areas where there are supposed to be cycle lanes, which seems to me to be a bit of a nonsense. I think one area where we've not done very well is with the encouragement of young people in our town activities. And I think we can do better in the next period of time going forward. Under 2.2, I think it's an area where we do better, which is open spaces. And we have made, I think, good improvements, both in Holtsburgh and shortly again in Morehouse Square. We've been very supportive in the last two to three years with the tennis centre down at the Oval. And we are also still trying to upgrade the Woburn Green Lane Sports Field. And I'm hoping that that will actually happen pretty soon, now that we are in a slightly better situation to consider that kind of project. We could move on to item 2.4. Again, I think young people mentioned, and again, I think there's more that we can do there. Under 2.5, yes, we still are producing a town guide, which is a very useful and important document. We are going to shortly look at our website with a view to upgrading it and making it perhaps slightly more user-friendly. And I think the question of communication generally, we would probably agree that we can do better. Although it is true to say that there were newsletters within certainly the last 12 months. But I think, you know, hands up, we're going to make a big effort to improve our two-way communication in the future. Moving on to the facing page. One of the points under enhancing and revitalising the town mentions the appointment of suitable town councillors. And I'm quite pleased to mention the fact that we have got in Andrea Essery, Alison Wheelhouse and Paul Henry, three really good additions to our town council. Andrea has a lot of local knowledge in the area of the town in the west. Paul Henry, you can't beat his knowledge because he's been not only a town councillor before, but he's also been a past mayor of the town. And I'm really happy to welcome Paul, who I've never worked with before, but I look forward to doing so in the future. And Alison, of course, needs no introduction. So I think the one other thing on this page that I want to mention is the public conveniences, where there has been quite a big effort that we put into proposing dementia-friendly toilets in Windsor End, which unfortunately, due to Covid, has not come to fruition at this time. But we do recognise the importance of having public conveniences. And we're not exactly, pardon the expression, flush with them in our town. So I think it would be good if we can finish that as soon as we can. And another point to mention, the hopper bus service, which again, was slightly blown off course by by the restrictions of the last 12 months. But I think there is a strong feeling that when we bring it back, we hopefully will see it going from strength to strength. Alexa, you wanted to interrupt?
I did, with some sort of breaking news that perhaps I'm not really allowed to mention. But councillor Cranler did intervene on our behalf at Unitree before the end of the last council. And I am expecting permission to move ahead with the public toilet refurb imminently.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Going on to page 10. I think just really to mention that the Business Liaison Working Group did result in the start-up of the Beckingsfield Business Organisation that has brought together in a networking connection some 200 local businesses. And I think that whilst we have obviously not seen very much activity again in the last year, it's something that we can return to and revitalise in the period, hopefully, this autumn. And I think, you know, it's something that in conjunction with the work that's already been done on the idea of thinking local and buying local, more scope for us to work closely with other organisations. I'm not going to say an awful lot, sorry, about financial controls and fiscal policy. I think we have been quite strong in terms of our financial control in the last sort of three or four years. Item 4.2 is worth mentioning in the respect that as a policy, we don't aim to dispose of councillor Owen's land. However, as all of you know, within the last year, we did conclude the sale of the Parkway Strip. And we hope that that will prove beneficial in a number of ways as we move forward in the future. And I think we'll be coming back to discuss that more in the next section of the. in the next section of this meeting. And finally, just to really say that the, the mechanism to establish the basis of an updated and new town plan to cover the period 2022 to 2026 will be put into place as soon as we have our first town council meeting, which I think after next week probably will be in July. And at that point, we will determine the actual shape of how we will run that project. It's probably fair to say that there will be good input from the neighbourhood plan steering group. And we will clearly have in mind the budget review in December, when that sort of basically says we will, we will not need to adjust our precept in the following year. So I think we, we can be fairly confident that we will be looking for the new town plan to be at least available in a draft form in the autumn. So I think that really is, is a sort of fairly quick walk through the town plan. And hopefully that, that was of interest.
Thank you, councillor Pike. It was very interesting. And interestingly enough, moving on to the questions we've got. There are quite a few answers in those statements that you've made from that bit of information. Thank you for, for explaining it. I'm now going to move on to discussions on questions. These have been submitted by the electorate of the town. I'm delighted to say we have got quite a few. What I'm going to do is read them out and then I will invite various individuals who, who have got answers towards some of these questions. I'll be answering the first one. This is a, a question from Mr. Johnson. And his question is, I understand that a new home business security company is opening, which is great. But what do the police have planned moving forward to protect our community in light of McColl's suffering three armed robberies and an average of three quarter home break-ins per month and 40 crimes per month? Well, obviously this is, this is not good news. But as a town council, we regularly get updates from PCSOs. We invite them to our community services meetings. They're very encouraging in, in supporting us with their information. And we will be inviting them to the next community safety meeting that we will hold under the new council. We also have our CCTV, which we will be updating at some time, possibly quite soon. It was, it has been used very successfully around the town and I think is, is an important part of this town. So unfortunately, this is the way life is now, but it has proved very useful. It did help at the McColl's break-in. It was used there, assisted the police in their task. And we, at the moment, the clerk is talking with Beckingshire Council or Unitry, who are taking over management of the CCTV project, but that is in hand. So we'll be looking towards the next community safety meeting where we'll hopefully get an update. The second question is from Malcolm Savage. The question reads as follows, what land is the council considering to satisfy the need for more allotments? Two, will the council ensure there's a water supply at any proposed site? Three, how many people are on the waiting list for allotments? Will the council pursue a compulsory purchase of the existing Park Lane site? Or lease of Park Lane via Bucks Council for allotments? And if not, how are they going to satisfy the need for allotments as they are obliged to do? If it is a question of funding, will the council consider a joint venture with community groups to raise money for compulsory purchase? With regards to Ivan's Road, existing allotments, is a plan to halve the size of the plots feasible? Sorry, I just lost you there. Parking, growing areas, access travel, et cetera. Number nine, how many plots would this release? And 10, how many plots will be lost for the proposed community garden? For those of you who aren't aware, there is, I'm sure you are aware, we mentioned to get funding for the community garden project. I'm going to hand over to Alexa, the town clerk, to answer this. I'm going to move on to the second question because that is part of this question, which is written to us by Robert, Robert Wood. He's disappointed, he's lacked a response from an offer he puts to town council. But his question is, what is the length of the waiting list for the allotments? How long are we going to have to wait for allotments? We've already lost this season year. What will the council do if the Park Lane site is left to become derelict? The Holtzbur site lacks facilities needed such as access by car, parking and water. One tat for the whole site is not adequate. And will you make changes to this site? It is only suitable for local residents if that. I know some of the answers, but I'll hand you over to the town clerk to answer this, please.
Okay, a lot of this is, is in process. So I know that, that there's been a lot of activity about it. There's been a lot of emails and, and actions. The town council has to work in a particular way, which is through committee. So a lot of this went to committee, to the Open Spaces Committee in February. And we were already in process of looking at allotments. And there were a number of resolutions went to that committee, which were all passed by, by the committee and they instructed myself to, to carry on and look into this matter. So what land is the council considering to satisfy the need? We're looking at any land at all. We are talking to the existing owners at Park Lane. We're talking to other landowners and we would like to talk to any landowner that has land suitable for, to be looked at. Yes, we would supply water at any proposed site. And indeed, we are currently looking at changing or enhancing the water supply at Ivan's Road for, for reasons that I'll come on to in, in a moment. How many people are on the waiting list for allotments? Currently, there are around 36 on the waiting list. We have been qualifying those on the list. And part of that qualification has been to make sure that allotments are allocated to people who live in Beckinsfield, who don't have a garden, who perhaps have lost their allotment at Park Lane. So all these were part of the resolutions which were agreed by the council in, in February. So we're, we're on that and continuing to, to look at that. Will the council pursue a compulsory purchase of the existing Park Lane site? The council has not yet debated that and it does need to have the information about the need and what the possibilities are before it can really, really look at that. There has been a certain correlation in a lot of the emails which I've received, which effectively say we must do a compulsory purchase of that, that site because it's the only site. But it clearly isn't. There is other land which is suitable for allotments. So it doesn't necessarily correlate exactly. Or lease of the Park Lane via Bucks Council. It's not really Bucks Council's issue at the moment. But we would involve them because, we would have to involve them because they are the only people with the power to make the compulsory purchase. But they, we would negotiate with them to do that on our behalf if it became apparent that that was the correct route to follow. We have been trying to lease or purchase the current site or certainly entered into negotiations because obviously I'm not authorised to do that by the council at the moment, but I was authorised to investigate it. If not, how are they going to satisfy the need for the allotments as they are obliged to do? We already do provide allotments and we do manage that need. I know that people have a view on the technicality around that. But I can assure you that we are currently satisfying that from, from a management point of view, even if it's not to the level of, that the Park Lane holders would, would like us to at the moment. If it's a question of funding, will the council consider a joint venture with community groups? Of course, the council would always look at, at joint ventures with community groups and to assist wherever they could. With regards to Ivan's Road, is it, is the plan to halve the size of plots feasible? Yes, it is. We've even had people saying, do you know what? The half plot is too big for me. I'd like a quarter plot. So we've been entering into negotiations with a lot of people. For some, it's a hobby. For some, they're really dedicated. And that is a very difficult balance to do. We've had some people who said, oh, no, we couldn't possibly give up any allotment. And then they've come back and said, well, actually, do you know what? I've got a really big garden at home and I don't really need this. And then they've given up the whole, the whole site. So it's, it's something that we are trying to deal with sensitively. But it is a difficult situation. How many plots would this release? At least 10, which is, which is a significant number. How many plots will be lost to the proposed community garden? It would be three half plots. And when we say lost, they, they tend to, they're plots that were not really being worked and they tended to turn over each time because they were not being worked. So that's part of the reason for that. Mr. Wood is very keen to, to help. And I have said to him that I would call him, which I will do. But I'm not in a position to make any decisions without a council resolution. So I will have to bring that idea back to the council. So I've already answered the waiting list. How long are we going to have to wait for allotments? Interestingly, on that list that I've got at the moment, there is only one person who's on there prior to, prior to 2020 and he, he's in December 2020. So most, 2019, most people appeared on the list last year. So it is a, a, a need that we have managed. The, the sites do turn over. Some people have been there for many years, but some, a lot of people start, they find it backbreaking, it's really difficult stuff. And they fall by the wayside and that is part of the management problem that, that we've had. And I'm hoping that Mr. Wood would actually be able to help us with that. What will the council do if the Park Lane site is left to become derelict? I don't believe that's what the current owners want to do with it. They have a plan which they are set on. And neither ourselves nor Bucks Council would, would be able to really interfere with that if they left it derelict. But I don't think that's what they're intending to do. The Holtzbur site lacks facilities such as access by car. Yes, it is in a residential area. We are looking at the water at the moment as part of some renovation work that we're doing down there. Also, we have cleared an additional three plots which replaced the three lost to the community garden. And actually, what the community garden is going to do, it's a community allotment rather than a garden. It's not, it's, it's somewhere where people will be able to get involved in, in a community way, in community growing. And there are quite a few people who have given up their plot currently, who've said, yes, actually, I'd rather do that. It's, you know, this is too much for me. I'd rather take, take part in that because there is a, a lot of wellbeing benefit in, in doing that as a group. And we will try to improve the water process, the water supply down there at the moment, especially as the plot has been extended and it's gone a bit further. So as part, we're also going to try and put a path in which should help with the dumping of, of stuff. People dump their waste at the end. We're going to dig that out because there was a lot of rotten stuff there. And we'll see if we can get additional water in there. So I hope that I've covered those sort of 15 questions.
Yeah, that's fine. Is there, there's going to be a? Sorry?
Alison has her hand up.
Sorry, Alison.
I was just wanting to ask Alexa, actually. The 36 people that are on the waiting list, is that before or after the 10 extra plots might come free from Ivan's Road?
That's before. So at the moment, currently, I've got, I've got one that we've just gave notice yesterday, which is a really big plot, which could provide two or possibly four plots. I've got two new ones that I've just cleared and I've got another one that's just given notice of a half plot. So I've got the potential for 15, 15 or 17, depending on how that plot splits against a waiting list of 36. So it, it's not looking like a desperate need at the moment. But, but also we have people, because we've been trying to qualify the list that we had. And I've still got about eight people who I don't think have responded. But then if they've gone and got another allotment somewhere else, they won't respond because they're not, they're not desperate for it. But we have been trying to contact every single person on the list and qualify them. And obviously we still have new people coming onto the list as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alexa. And if I'm right in thinking, there's going to be a turning point because at the moment access is forwards and then you've got to reverse back out with the new plots with the community garden. There will be a small, small area. It's not going to be covered in tarmac. Where we'll be able to cut people who are to drive in, reverse back round to come out. So I know that is an issue for both local residents and for the allotment holders.
It, it's an issue for the local residents because they're concerned that the entrance is narrow and that if somebody drives in, they, they're reversing out and that. I'm sure everyone in Beckinsfield is a fantastic driver and that they reverse perfectly and that there's never going to hit that fence, but
It is a bit tight.
It is a bit tight. It's very tight. So no, we're not going to tarmac over it. It's going to be this honeycomb growth room stuff. And whilst it is ostensibly there for any community activity that is, is going on, obviously when that's not happening, an allotment holder could come in, pull into the place, take their bags of compost or whatever it is out of their car. And then they can reverse, do a three-point turn and go out. And it should alleviate that problem.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question. We've got a few more to get through. This question has been put to us by Jackie Lomax. And Jackie has asked, to continue to help our town centre shops and eateries, can we have a one-hour free parking ticket from the car park meters and any longer stays need to be paid for? A second, sorry, this will ensure cars do not stay all day free of charge and stop commuters and office workers taking advantage of the free all-day parking, which is filling up the car park for shoppers. Number two, can the town council buy some land at the west of the town, near the road to Nowhere, to replace the allotments for the use of the residents in the west of the town? Splitting allotments is not a solution to the allotments problem. We have a large sum of money from the sale of the land of the medical centre. We need to use this for the people of the town. Can we buy enough land to also house a skate park as we have no recreational facilities for teenagers? Well, Jackie, the, with just an announcement tonight by Martin Tett, the leader of Unitry. Unfortunately, he's put out a, a note saying that the parking charges are being reinstated around the county. And it's, it, it worked very well, I have to say. But obviously, it's the, the two car parks at the back of where Prezoz was, the old town cinema, around the back of Cardane House do belong to Bucks to Unitry. But obviously, we're in their hands. We, we, we understand that putting business back into line is very, very important to the town. And we hope that everybody's going to be able to manage as best as they can. With reference to the allotment land, we, Alexa's already covered this. But with a new council coming, we haven't, we've still got to meet and decide and discuss how we're going to move forward with the money from the, the sale of Park Lane. There's lots of projects which I hope we'll be discussing. We did submit an idea, I believe about four years ago, with reference to a skate park in Malthouse Square. It was met with concern by residents and had quite a few objections. But that does not mean we're unsympathetic. It's very important to consider teenage recreation in this town. And we're all very aware that a bored teenager will take out his boredom on something which might be detrimental to our, our wellbeing. So we are very conscious that we need to find some sort of entertainment or discuss this. And I look forward to sitting around with a meeting and going through those. Moving on to the next question. This is a question, a group of questions which have been given to us from the Beckinsfield Society, who, they've contacted Beckinsfield Society. We do encourage people to write into our town clerk. If you do have a question, because obviously, one, your question won't get missed. Secondly, it comes straight to the heart. The first question is the town plan 2017, 2021. Where next? Where next? When will the revised plan be ready? And will compilation include residents' input and engagement committee? Number two, can car parking charges continue to be waived to help shoppers recover from Covid? I announced the, I just mentioned earlier about the announcement from Martin Tett. Three, the pavement park is returned in the Old Town. What will be done? Three, the pavement park is returned in the Old Town. What will be done about this dangerous surge? Four, will councillors be holding surgeries to give access to councillors after this pandemic? Five, the general untidiness across the town concerns many members. Will the council support community action through the society's love Beckinsfield campaign? Number six, buying Beckinsfield campaign aided in promoting localised shopping during the pandemic. Will the council offer more assistance to the drive via increased promotion, perhaps encouraging local business day stroke event? How will councils be helping the reinstated summer fair? HS2 lorries are still struggling by when, are still come by when our tracking camera is being installed and will they be near Beckinsfield? Can Beckinsfield Town Council report back to the residents, please? And nine, will Beckinsfield Town Council be relaunching a newsletter to inform residents in the future? So we covered the town plan with Alastair earlier on. Questions four and nine will be will be dealt with with the new council. We recognise that transparency, well, it's not really transparent. We have nothing really to hide. It's more about the public getting to know who we are. And we recognise that we could do better at that. So we'll be looking at those issues. There have been two newsletters this year already launched and we are trying to keep that up to speed so that we can keep informed about what's going on around Beckinsfield. Pavement parking, this is not our authority to deal with unfortunately, because WL lines, a car that's parked dangerously should be reported. And I would suggest that that's the best thing, but we're not unsympathetic. And obviously, if we fit, we do see a lot of this happening, then it needs to be reported in. So general untidiness across the town. I spoke with the clerk and it's one of my sort of, the untidiness is one of my hates. I really want to try and sort this out. And I have spent time with the clerk and with other councillors battling with Bucks Council at the time, dealing with an individual there who has now left. But we have had some comments from the individuals working. There's a new person coming on board in June. What I would like to do with the new council, when all elected in, is put together a working party towards the management of keeping Beckinsfield tidy. And this can involve campaigns and ideas. And we'll sit around a table. A working party is a bit more flexible than a council group in effect, because we can really put our cards on the table. But I look forward to doing that. But we will keep battling with Unitree to get the town tidied up properly. It's more the consistency of it. A lot of local organisations have done fantastic work going around cleaning, but it'd be nice to have somebody getting around there every week who's able to do that job. We are working hard to try and make that happen. The buying Beckinsfield, we referred to the first community and safety committee. And I think it's a good question. And as I said previously, we do want to promote businesses in Beckinsfield. And around, we want people to get back into buying. It's great to see the shops reopening slowly and I'm really pleased to see that. Reinstituting the summer fair. We are already in discussions with fair organisation and will be continuing this over the next few months. And hopefully, we'll be able to assist in getting this up and running again. HS2 lorries still struggling. We will find out and report back to you on this. We've got some very good Unitree councillors on board and I'm sure we'll be able to get some information from them. But we have nothing to answer to that at the moment, aware that we don't want this happening in our town if we can avoid it. So moving forward on to the next question, and this is from Simon, Simon Wolf. Can the town council confirm what its position is on the call for land for the revised local plan? Whether the council will from the onset resist any attempts to remove land from the green belt as listed out in option nine, the ill-fated local plan that was abandoned? Also, could the council confirm what it is going to do with the money raised from the sale of the land for the new medical centre? If you're looking for ideas, why not buy the land to the east of Beckinsfield, surrounded by the A three five five Minerva Way and the road to nowhere? And turn it into a park? We seem to be the only town in Southbuck without a sign of this park. So Simon, thank you for your question. The issue about a park in Beckinsfield, I mean, it's certainly something I'd like to see. We'll start at the beginning. The question on revised local plan, of course, going back to those years where the great work of the Beckinsfield Society did. And if you remember us as a town council, we found the whole plan unsustainable. And with the society's work, we were able to support and with a lot of other councils who turned down the plan, it was finally shelved. The idea of a park would be fantastic, but it has to be, it's quite a bit of work to do. There's a lot of a lot of landowners around that area and lots of difficult ways to be able to purchase that. But certainly, I appreciate your idea and we take it on board. With reference to the money, and this comes up a lot, we have sold the land down for the medical centre. But of course, we have to look at, not saying that we're not going to spend it on the right things, we will, but it's about the safety around the medical centre. We may have to invest a bit to make sure that everything runs as smoothly as it needs to around that area. And we will be looking at these sort of options. But of course, I'm bracing new council when we get together. This is something that we'll be talking about. And hopefully, you know, it's going to be great to be able to improve Beckinsfield with those funds. So I think that is the end of our questions. I'd like to thank very much those members of the public who offered them to us. Always good to see. And I think if I'm right, so that brings to an end this town meeting. I thank you very much for joining us tonight, members of the public who are watching this on YouTube. And I would like to wish you all the best. I look forward to seeing you all very soon and your role. We'll get you all into your various positions. And I think next, is it next Thursday, Alexa, the the mayor making?
Would you like me to explain?
If you could, please. Yeah, I just don't want to say the wrong thing.
We're in a, so we will have a meeting next Thursday. I'm not entirely sure of the time at the moment, but we will issue that. We've been able to have this meeting on Zoom because it's not a council meeting. It's a meeting of the town and legislation is such now that we are obliged to meet face to face. However, coronavirus legislation says that we can't meet face to face. So we are in a slightly strange situation. So we are going to, but if we don't meet within fourteen days of the election, we are obliged to meet by statute within those fourteen days and to get you all sworn in as councillors, which currently you are not. So we're in a sort of mix-up of legislation at the moment. So what we're going to do is we're going to meet outside the town hall because we have a statutory requirement that members of the public must attend, but we can't do the meeting remotely. So we are going to meet in the car park or on the town green. Hopefully, it won't be raining. You are going to, all the council will accept office. I'm going to send you your declarations of office. You need to accept them in front of me as the clerk so that we do have to be face to face. After that, there will be an election for the new mayor. And that's why we've had to have this meeting today as Alex is the outgoing mayor. And we'll have that election. And also, we will pass a resolution to give some authority to the clerk so that we can do the slightly less interesting bits like reviewing all our documentation by Zoom. And we will shelve that to a different date. So it's very convoluted that we will be making the mayor in the car park. It's very glamorous.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'd like to thank you all again, members of the public on YouTube and my councillors. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.